Good evening. Calling to attention our Monday, May 9th regular school board meeting. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Is there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda, Board members or Superintendent?
You have a revised agenda from Friday, May the 6th that removed item 8.01, which was the MOU with the city of Mineola, which will come back at a later date. And we added item 8.08, which is an HR addendum that was added today. And you have a copy of that.
Anything else, Board members? No? Okay. All right. So we are on approval of the minutes, Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, April 25th, 2022.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? Great. Okay. I believe we are starting with our representation. We have a lot of it tonight, so.
You do, and I'm gonna go down front.
Oh, okay. We're going down front. We're starting with the recognition of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, so that's, I'm assuming, why she's up front and why we have these outstanding students over here representing us. So Superintendent?
We do. This is our last board meeting that they would be able to come and join us as seniors. There are a lot of busy things going on, and so they all wanted to be here tonight as our last opportunity for me to say thank you. I had a chance to meet with them, was that last week? We were all together. And they brought their predecessors, and we had a nice time together. And they shared some thoughts and insights and just some recommendations to the group that will be joining us for next year. And so I've asked them to tell us who their predecessor is, since some of them did not have their representation. They've just done some student body elections. And so I'm gonna call them up, and I have a little gift for them, just a token of my appreciation to say thank you for their service and the outstanding job they did, just serving as a voice and all the things that they were able to accomplish. If y'all will just stand up here after I call your name, and then you're gonna go right outside the door for a photo, and then Din Cove is gonna come right back in. We'll continue on with the recognition, because he has his report for this evening as well.
Okay.
Okay. That's great. So I'm gonna start with Cole Baxley. Cole Baxley is our representative from Eustis High School.
One clap.
And also here tonight is Haley Johnson, representing Umatilla High School. We have a couple not here tonight, because we have schools with SGA banquets, and we have one with a tennis banquet tonight. As I said, lots of things going on tonight. Representing Leesburg High School, we have two representatives from there, is Lyera. Pass, you know I'm gonna mess that up, Lyera. Past her neck. Did I get close?
Hello?
It's not your turn, Mr. Johnson. Representing Taverries High School is Tyler Hines. And then, of course, Din Cove Bryant.
Hello?
Officer, representing Leesburg High School. And Jacob Kionas is also from Eustis High School. And Jacob is actually, he was our junior representative, and he's gonna be with us and back joining the group for next year. So we're excited. He's, was, I think, pretty much at every meeting, and so he has had a chance to really see the process, and is gonna be a great service to us for next year. So come on up, Jacob.
Steve, stand by.
I'm here.
I know, but we're busy.
I again just wanna say thank you to this amazing group of young people, and I know you're gonna continue on to do wonderful things as they head off to college, except for Jacob. He's gonna come back for next year. Yeah, he says I'm stuck with him for another year. The board would like to give their thanks as well. So Jacob, if you'll lead the group, and you're gonna head back out that door for a quick photo, and then Din Cove is gonna come back in to give his report, if y'all wanna stay in here and hear his report from the group. And we'll move on to the next representation after this group has been recognized. So if you'll head.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing you next year.
See you next year.
Congratulations. Tell you what, congratulations. All the best. All the best to you.
And then I'm gonna ask Din Cove, before he leaves, you have someone with you tonight who I'd like for you to introduce as... Go ahead.
Yes. Behind me, I have the next Student Body Vice President, Victoria Skirting.
Hi.
My successor, Abique Shill, could not be here tonight, because he started his Lake Sumter classes tonight. So he's becoming an academic already.
We had, most of their predecessors were at the last meeting, and so we had a chance to meet her. So we're excited to work with her as a representative from Leesburg High School for next year. So thank you for being here tonight.
Okay. So we'll move on to our next recognition for now. And I believe we are at the LCEA Scholarship Recognition for the Cynthia Schumacher Scholarship winners. So Kathy and Terry and...
Yes?
We're so glad to see you guys this evening.
Okay. Superintendent Corningate, Madam Chair and Board, we are thrilled tonight at LCEA to be honoring two marvelous students with the Cynthia Schumacher Scholarship. I've talked with her on the phone, she's still active with us, and she's doing well. These kids have worked hard to obtain their goals with all of their community service hours. We know they will be wonderful contributing members to our society. The first recipient is Jordan Tarquin. She is from East Ridge. She will be graduating magna cum laude with a 4.1, heading to Florida Gulf Coast University. She plans to major in exercise science. Becoming a physical therapist and working to develop professional athletes has been a dream of hers since middle school. She is preparing for the long adventure to obtain her doctorate in physical therapy. Brady Walker stated, "Jordan sets the bar very high for her peers, exceeding expectations." Plus, she has always received the highest scores on every single assessment. Both of her parents, Michael and Amy, are educators as well as members of LCEA, and we appreciate them very much. Our second recipient is Hunter Langtree from Mount Dora High School. He's also graduating magna cum laude with a 4.49. He plans to pursue engineering technology at Lake Sumter College. His mother, Kalen, is also a member of LCEA. Hunter's honors are quite remarkable: student government officer, National Honor Society, varsity baseball, Eagle Scouts, as well as church youth group. Once completing his goals, he hopes to work as a relay technician for Duke Energy. We know we will see Jordan and Hunter at the top. Congratulations once again to you, your families, and your teachers for giving you such a strong foundation. Your accomplishments are just the beginning of a bright future awaiting for you.
Kathy, we would love to recognize them as well. Yes, please. Come on up.
Congratulations. All the best. Great job. A great job.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you.
Okay. So our next recognition is our School Resource Deputy Recognition. So Mr. Mayberry, oh, he's ready.
Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent, it is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to recognize one of Lake County's finest, Master Deputy Alice Waters. At the end of the current school year, Deputy Waters will retire from the Lake County Sheriff's Office as the longest-tenured School Resource Deputy in Lake County. She began working in the SRD unit in February 1999, where I actually crossed paths with her while I was in my early years of teaching at Taverries Middle School. Twenty-three years later, Deputy Waters has decided to leave the unit and retire to the next phase of her life. In her time as an SRD, Deputy Waters worked at Gray Middle, Umatilla Middle, Taverries Middle, Mount Dora Middle, Carver Middle, and most recently, at Spring Creek Charter School. While other opportunities may have been presented to Deputy Waters along the way, her desire was to remain loyal to Lake County Schools as a member of the SRD unit, and we respect and appreciate her loyalty. It is hard to calculate the number of lives Deputy Waters touched and changed as a result of her dedication to our students, staff, and school communities, but she has indeed made an impact in our district. We thank her for her service to Lake County Schools, and we wish her the best for her future. At this time, I would like for Deputy Waters to come forward to receive a token of our appreciation from Superintendent Corningate. And I would like to introduce Sheriff Pitten-Greddell and ask that he come to the podium.
What Mr. Mayberry didn't tell you is she was 15 in 1999. Is that... But, you know, I could tell you many stories that I've heard about children, students, that she has made a positive impact in their life. And honestly, probably would have chose a different road had it not have been the intervention that she was involved with that student. Some even employees of my own who have told me stories about her intervention with their children on a school campus. And one of the things that I look for, the most important thing I look for in a new hire at the Sheriff's Office, is a heart to serve. Everything else we'll work on. And I can't think of a bigger heart for service than Ally. And I know of her countless nights and weekends without getting paid, being with these students, helping these students through whatever it is that they were dealing with, and they could always count on her. And the most warming thing in the world is to hear one of her prior students come up and say, "Miss Ally, I am now working at such and such," or "I'm in the military," and I know that those are countless of those encounters. And so thank you. I've only got you for one more month, but you're always welcome, you always be family. Thank you, Board, for recognizing her.
Thank you, Sheriff. It's obvious how proud of you, proud of her that you guys all are and that we are as well. So we appreciate it very much. Our last Pledge of Recognition tonight is our District Spotlight. We have mental health awareness, Oak Park Middle School is being featured, so.
We have Thomas Johnson coming forward on behalf of our Communications Office to...
Get that going for us?
Hit play.
You wanna say something about it?
This, well, if you'll remember, we did the proclamation at the last meeting and this celebrating Mental Health Awareness Month. And so across the district throughout the month, there have been a number of programs like what you'll see displayed here today from Oak Park. So we wanna thank them, and go ahead and hit play.
All righty.
Right. I'm Mark Wentz. I'm the mental health liaison.
And I'm Ashley Bourgeois, School Counselor here at Oak Park Middle School.
Well, we've got a pretty important performance tonight that coincides with Mental Health Awareness Month, which is May, so we're really excited about that.
Our band director found an amazing piece of music and brought it to us.
It's called Fragile. It's a score that was inspired by mental health, and it's just wonderful to hear the kids talk about it. It's really created sort of a conduit for kids to talk about mental health in band.
Because that's something that we've been working on for the past few years. We've really tried to build common language to express our emotions, to learn coping skills, and I love that the teachers have taken it and are using it in their specific subject area. But the kids, the kids took to the music, like, is another form of expression. And so I'm proud of them, because they've not been working on it for very long, and they're nervous about performing it, because they've had other pieces all year, but they're so committed to this piece.
It's like sometimes, you know, you can teach some of the words to communicate their feeling, but sometimes you don't have the words, and music fills in the blanks.
I am so excited to see the students perform. It's such a great way that's very organic and very de-stigmatizing and getting everyone involved and just being mentally well.
When I first heard Fragile, it reminded me of a bad memory. When you think of a bad memory, you remember the things that led up to it, and then you remember the bad part, and then you remember how it settled out. A lot of people can relate to it, because in their life, bad things happen, and then sometimes you feel like things happen to you on purpose, but it's not. And you feel so caught up in the moment, and you're very stressed, and you're feared, and you're sad, and you have all these emotions. But after it, it settles out, and then you can, like, feel yourself again.
Our music piece tonight, Fragile, is about mental health.
Not all of us know what we're going through, and Fragile kind of explains how we, everyone's going through something, but some hide it and some decide to show it. And then whenever some hide it, typically it ends up lashing out into this big old mess that we can't really control. So it's better to talk out your feelings than just let them stay.
Fragile just helps me explain how I feel in music.
Fragile also shows a bunch of, like, different emotions that people go through that aren't always happy.
One of the things that I know for sure is that it is very difficult to educate a fragile heart or a fragile mind. And what they do is they take the time to actually meet the needs of the students as it relates to their emotional state, so that the teachers in the classroom are able to teach. They give them outlets in order to do this, communication and being able to listen to what it is that is on their hearts and minds. Music is a universal language, and I believe that it speaks to the very soul of all of us. And so for them to have this opportunity to express themselves in a musical way is phenomenal.
Now I wanna go listen to the rest of it. It was really good. Thank you very much for sharing. Aren't we clapping? Before we finish up our representation, we're gonna ask Din Cove Bryant to come up and deliver his, is this his last?
Is this his last?
Last Superintendent's Advisory Council Meeting updates.
Good evening, Chairman Luke, Superintendent and members of the Board. Congratulations to Eustis softball on their win over Bishop Moore last Thursday. I'd also like to give a shout out to the junior class officers and the junior class sponsor at Leesburg, Ms. Morgan Davidson, for hosting Leesburg's prom this past Saturday, bringing prom season in Lake County, excuse me, to a close. I'd also like to extend my best wishes to the student governments of Lake Mineola and East Ridge, who are hosting their SGA banquet this evening. Some of you may remember that it was from this very podium that I gave my very first report as Chair of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. I know it wasn't necessarily planned, but I can't think of a better way for my chairmanship to end in the same place that it began. I'd like to begin by congratulating all of the new student body presidents throughout the district. The new presidents that could not make it include Cameron, I'm gonna butcher it, Ann Cottoli of Southlake and Aubrey Sellers of Mount Dora. We also have Ryan Dorsey, who will take over as the senior class president at Taverries High School next year. The Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee met for the last time this school year last week on Wednesday, May 4th, in the boardroom. At that meeting, the outgoing presidents gave advice to the incoming presidents and shared what they had learned over, shared what we had learned in our year as president. We also gave them a few ways to try and one-up us for next year. As my chairmanship comes to an end, I want to share with everyone some of the things I'll miss from my time leading the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. I'll miss Mrs. Luke, who always has a kind word for everyone. I'll miss hearing the stories of Mrs. Cunningham as she travels across the district. I'll miss learning of the wonderful partnerships that Mr. Mathias is building to help better our schools. I'll miss Mr. Johnson's very good questions and the stoic silence that Mr. Dodd brings to the Board. I'll miss getting to speak up for the students in rooms with some of Lake County's most important officials. I'll miss meeting students from all across this district and sharing with them ways they too can make a difference. I'll miss hearing their concerns and doing everything in my power to deliver action to them. I'll also miss the meetings when the Superintendent would bring snacks. I'm not sure who told you, but the road to my heart takes a detour through my stomach. Someone asked me once in an interview, "Why do you serve in all these leadership roles?" I told them the answer was simple. When I was little, my parents told me, "Always leave it better than you found it." Although they were usually talking about the playroom and the kitchen, I think it applies in this situation. When this group was formed eight months ago, I had no idea the impact it would have on our district and on me as a person. Thanks to the representatives on this committee, students in Lake County have a modernized dress code. High schoolers will pay a fair amount in class dues and in parking fees. But most importantly, they have a seat at the table. To the other members of this committee, it's been an honor to lead you and serve alongside you, as we spoke up for students. I hope that each of you will take away something from your time on this committee, and I hope it was a rewarding experience for each of you. As all of you begin to head out into this crazy world and start your lives, I encourage you to never stay silent about things that matter. Each of you has taught me something, and I plan to carry those lessons with me as I move forward. Board members, as I close, I have but two requests. The first, keep listening. I've said before, and I'll say it again, that in any room where decisions are being made about students, students deserve a seat at the table. I'm glad that I was able to lead the way in giving students that seat, and I encourage you to never settle for not having that student voice represented. The second request, keep leaving it better than you found it. Keep finding ways to make Lake a destination district. Keep working on school lunch menus. Keep improving the opportunities that students have, both inside and outside of the classroom. And lastly, and most importantly, thank you to Superintendent Corningate. You have taught me more than you could ever know, and I will always look back on our time working together with FONIST. And I will be forever grateful to you for putting your trust in me to represent the 43,000 students that call this district home. If I ever do decide to run for governor, you can bet I'll take you up on the offer to run my campaign. Or at the very least, read my speeches to make me sound smart. God bless Olivium, and God bless Lake County. Forever yours in service, Din Cove Bryant.
Yes, sir.
Can you come by one last time and shake hands?
Yes, come on. Change in love a little bit.
I'm sure he was. You thought I was your favorite board member?
You are my favorite board member.
Did y'all hear that?
It's because of all the questions he asks. You always entertain me, too. Yes, go Bulls. She said go Bulls, even though she's a knight. I said go Bulls. I'm so excited for next year's representatives, too. They've been just a smidge of what you've brought, Din Cove. It's been wonderful. We appreciate you very much, and we appreciate all of you as well. The voices that you guys bring forward are just as equally important. So thank you all for your service and for being here with us tonight. So we are on the Education Foundation Report, I believe. Yes. Oh, we skipped public input. Don't skip public input. Hold on one second. I do have one card. My bad. So we'll do public input. If I could have Catherine Williamson from the Plantation Democrat Club. You're up. She, yes. Welcome. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Catherine Williamson, and this won't take long. I am going to put into the record a resolution that our club passed this past week, and it's a resolution expressing support for naming a Lake County public school for Virgil D. Hawkins. You all are probably familiar with him. So I'm just gonna read the resolution, if that's okay at this point. Whereas Virgil D. Hawkins was born and raised in Ocahumpka, Lake County, Florida, and whereas he was one of the first African-American attorneys in the state of Florida, and whereas his efforts paved the way for equal admission rights for African-Americans to the University of Florida School of Law, and whereas during his decades-long quest to achieve equality of admission to the University of Florida School of Law, he remained loyal to Lake County and a resident of Leesburg, where he established his law practice noted for its aid to the indigent. And whereas it is a public impression that in the future, an elementary school will be built near US Highway 27 and Florida Highway 48, which would include the village of Ocahumpka in its catchment area. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Plantation Democrats Club of Lake County, Florida, that a future Lake County school be named or renamed for Virgil D. Hawkins.
Thank you very much. I know that we have, just so you know, for just further education on it, we do have a policy in regards to naming, and I know this is just to put it out there for us, but I would encourage you guys to look into that and...
I suspected that, but we wanted, we wanted to do this to honor him and his descendants who are very proud of what he did for the state of Florida.
As they should be. We appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do you have something you wanna say? You look like you wanna say something. Okay. Just making sure. I didn't wanna look over you. I have Casey Edmondson now from the Education Foundation for our report. Thank you, Casey.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent. My name is Casey Edmondson, and I serve as the Development Director for the Foundation. And I'll be doing the report this evening, because Carmen is with our celebrity dancers at a meeting. Our Apple Mart store has had over 1,000 teacher visits this year to date and has distributed $76,000 in supplies. We'll be open next Wednesday, and that's the last one for this school year, and then we reopen August 3rd. The Board has met for a strategic planning session on April 27th to prioritize funding initiatives for the '22-'23 school year. A decision will be made at our next meeting on May 25th, but leading the programmatic areas are construction outdoor classrooms, updating the science labs in middle schools and high schools, VPK, and entrepreneur programs. We were able to secure $15,000 donation from the Herbert Lehner Charitable Trust for the Science Lab at THS and their entrepreneur class. Scholarships for the '22 class have been awarded in the amount of $378,204 to 101 deserving students that are going to college or trade schools.
That's a test of the national emergency system.
Did we pass, or...
Sorry. Yeah, if you wanna wait, just one second, Casey. Okay, go ahead, Casey. Thank you.
Tomorrow evening, we will be hosting 145 retirees and their guests at the Annual Retirement Dinner at the Venetian Center. Red for Ed is our annual school supply, or excuse me, countywide school supply collection drive that kicks off... that kicks off in July. And we're joining it a little earlier this year because Astutula has a Spring Cruise and Tunes event on Saturday, May 14th, from 2 to 9, and they will be collecting school supplies and donating them to the foundation. So we will have boxes that will be distributed to participating companies starting in June. And the weigh-in will be August 1st at Wooton Park in Taveries. Stepping out for education, tickets went on sale today. That's where our executive director is this evening. The event is held on Friday, July 29th, as well as Saturday, July 30th. Our celebrity dancers include Lori Myers, who's an assistant principal at Sorrento Elementary. Jamie Bach is the owner of Jamie and Company Real Estate. Shawna Purdy is the owner at Kurtz AC. Jimmy Adams is a project manager for Electric Services. And Tyrell Rachel is a trainer at Affinity Fitness. And Dave Helton is the administrator at the law offices of Pamela J. Helton. Takesacken Children held their graduation luncheon on May 4th and honored 33 graduating seniors. And this year, they are bringing in 40 new students to replace a graduating class. Takesacken Children also received a $15,000 grant from the WD, WT Bland Trust and $4,000 from the Howie Gardens Civic Club this past week, and that will be used to purchase scholarships. One sentence on the next page. Our Visioning Committee meets May 11th at 9 o'clock in the Foundation Office. And then our next board meeting, as I stated, is May 25th at noon, and that will be held at the district office. Any questions?
Standing as usual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Challenger, are you trying to get him back real quick? Okay, he just texted and the phone hung up on him. So. We'll take just a minute just because we are on the attorney's report to see if we can get him back on the line.
I can help. Go report.
Hello?
Hey, Mr. Johnson, can you hear us?
Back?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. It's just a drop off.
No worries. We are on the attorney's report. Did you have anything this evening?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Perfect. And we're glad we got you back for that. Okay, we are on the consent agenda.
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.09.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay. So let's start with 11.01, which is our public hearing. Mr. Johnson, we're on our public hearing for the final approval of the revisions to Policy 6840 Audit Selection Process.
Okay, let me get it. 10 point.
It's 11.01.
11.01?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a matter before the board of the final approval of revisions to Policy 6840 Audit Selection Process. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak or there that wishes to speak to this particular matter, please come forward to the podium at this time. Is anyone coming forward, Madam Chairman?
I was gonna, I was wondering how you were going to proceed with that. No, I don't see anyone coming forward, Mr. Johnson.
And then I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Great. Superintendent?
I recommend final approval of revisions to Policy 6840 Audit Selection Process.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, now we're on 11.02, which is review and discussion of the interviews conducted by the school board regarding our legal services, our legal counsel. So, Mr. Dodd, do you mind if I like volley over to you? I know you've left us some notes if you want to.
Sure. Yes, yes. So I've had Natalie provide you a copy of some of the cheater notes I took as I, as I called these references. Yeah, I'm going to tell you that, uh, I don't think they, they make it any easier for us because every person who picked up the phone would rave and rave about whoever I was calling about. So, um, I mean, I guess you're certainly not going to give somebody's name who's going to give you a bad report. Uh, but, um, but, um, you know, I think they all spoke real high volumes. And so I think no matter where we land as a board, we're in great hands.
Perfect. Anybody had questions for Mr. Dodd and his reference checks?
No. But these are very complete. Thank you, Mr. Dodd.
Oh.
So I'm wondering if we want to just lead a discussion with a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we select Bowen Schroth as our, um, next school board attorney.
Okay.
Second then?
Second. Any discussion?
Once again, I guess, I mean, it just goes back to this. This was challenging. And, and, uh, and certainly, um, not any strike against Gray Robinson because they have got a strong reputation in front of us that you all have done outs, they've done outstanding with our lobbying efforts. So, I mean, I think that that is a relationship that we absolutely must maintain as they are a very talented group of people. And certainly indicative by the, the people who I called to, to share about their experience. But, you know, I, I think for me, I, I share Mr. Mathias' sentiments there. Just, you know, thinking about the local ties that, uh, Bone and Schroth have. And I know that when I called those references as well, people would just glow about Mr. Myers in particular. And I know that he's, uh, got a deep passion for our district and, uh, and, and brings, um, once again, a lot of the benefits of, of a larger firm to, to us that, uh, either folk would have done. Um, I think tonight we've kind of just seen the necessity from that, you know, when, you know, going from a one-man show to a, a firm and.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Did anybody else? That's well said. Cunningham? Okay. All those in favor of Bowen and Schroth?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Thank you both for being here this evening and I would echo the sentiments of the quality of service that Gray Robinson has brought to the table.
Y'all did a very good job and Gray Robinson is a great firm. So this is not a slight.
Yeah. Great firm. Thank you very much.
I, I would like to discuss something since now we've made this selection. Is, I think that maybe it's timely that, um, as we go through the transition, that maybe Mr. Johnson is able to turn things over as quickly as we can, um, come to whatever terms we have to come to. But I think that we begin to work through that.
Absolutely. I, I can't echo that enough.
Sounds good. So we'll work on that. We'll work on that. Mr. Johnson, we'll work on that.
I would agree or disagree with that, but the audio is horrible and I can barely make out what Mr. Mathias said.
I just said you sucked.
Not what he said.
Whatever he said is fine with me.
Boom.
Okay, I will call you, Mr. Johnson. We will talk about what was said tonight for sure.
Hey, was that bad? All right.
You may want to watch this on YouTube.
All right, Superintendent, I believe we're on your report. I'm so sorry.
So I too wanted to mention that we are going to be celebrating all of our retirees tomorrow evening. Just a reminder to the board that we'll be gathering, as, um, Casey mentioned in her report. And I, I wanted to just take a minute to thank all of our retirees. One, I'm just so grateful for your many, many years of service and I just wish you all the best as you head and begin a, a new chapter in your life. Also, next week, we're going to kick off our graduation season. It is running pretty much all week long. We'll start with Lake Hills and Taveries High on Monday and continue with ceremonies well into the following week, concluding on May the 26th with Lake Virtual. So, um, I know you all have your dates and times and locations and have signed up for this, the ceremonies that you'll be attending. So congratulations to all of our graduates to the class of 2022. And that is all I have today, other than we had two letters of condolence. One, Mary Ann Gaddis, she's the mother of Laura Hilding, who's a teacher at Eustace Middle. So our condolences to Laura and her family and also to Karen Flores, who's also a teacher at Eustace Middle who lost her father, Kenneth Kahn. So condolences to her family.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Mathias?
This is always that time of year when it's very surreal that it seems like the end of the service where we have an opportunity to attend graduation, shake hands with those students, and that's what it's all about. So I cannot wait for graduation. I have enjoyed watching the Facebook of the proms and all the events, the achievements of all of our kids. And, um, and it is with great honor I serve on this board. That's all I got to say about that.
Mrs. Cunningham?
I'd first like to express my appreciation to our two finalists law firms. I was highly impressed with both. I don't think we could have gone wrong with either. So congratulations. And please know that, um, we look forward to working hopefully with both of you in the future. As Mr. Mathias said, graduation has always been my favorite time of the year. When I was a principal, it was the day I looked forward to. So having my schools, that I will be attending their graduations and taking part in their ceremonies, I'm really excited and looking forward to that. I would really encourage all of you to take the opportunity to either watch or attend a graduation. There's nothing like renewing your spirit for the merits of education and watching people walk across the stage and receive their diplomas. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Dodd?
Absolutely. Well, all very well said so far. Meetings like tonight just give you that, that pause and help you just feel so proud about how much goes on here in Lake County, um, hearing from our students and being able to celebrate them. We have a deputy who invoked such emotion from being in the room. You know, I, I think just at all levels, there's, it's our people who really make a difference. And, uh, and the people that we work with, um, get that, you know, they understand the importance of that. And so I, I just, I'm, I'm just taken aback tonight, just, just hearing about all, all these celebrations and knowing going forward over the next week what that's going to look like. And it's, it's really, really exciting, you know, and it's, it just gives you certainly many good feel-good feelings there. Speaking of feel-good feelings, the Audit Committee now is, uh, I guess, able to move forward with the, with a new appointee, right? Based on our policy that we finalized tonight. So, um, I guess, I guess it'd be incumbent on us as a board, as long as there's a seat vacant to bring forth a name. If one of you can think of somebody who's interested in serving on the Audit Committee, we can fill that vacant spot. Do you already know somebody? Do you, do y'all already know somebody? What would be the process for that? I mean, can we just approve, approve that tonight? Does that need to be an agenda item or, I mean, if, if there's no? All right, so. But it requires majority vote of the board.
I have it written down. It was a recommendation. He's a retired CPA.
And he's interested?
He is.
Okay, great. Yeah, if you want to bring it, well, we can do that. That sounds wonderful.
It's her appointment. Let her just do it.
No, it's. Is it your appointment or the board's appointment for the vacant seat?
Yeah, it's for the vacancy.
So, so we can approve that by majority of the, of the board?
Well, I will, I will get you his resume.
All right, that'd be fantastic. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. That's all. All right. Thank you for your work with that. I know that you and Mr. Yocum and we've got some things squared away, so we appreciate that. I wanted to recognize a couple of things that I was able to attend last week. Dan Cove, who I think he stepped out, but the superintendent and I and Mrs. Cunningham got to attend the first ever Samuel Shepard Scholarship Award Celebration. The scholarship was set up by the Robinson House and the family members of Samuel Shepard, who was one of the Groveland Forum. And they recognized Dan Cove as their very first scholarship recipient. It was a very warm ceremony and, um, listening to the state's attorney talk about the case and then to see Dan Cove in the room with very important people was just another, just another piece that he can put on his resume and a testament to the young man that he is. And so, um, I, we were appreciative of the Robinson House for coming all the way to traveling to Florida to, to present that award to him. It was a really unique experience. The Taveries High School Teaching Academy has now graduated their second round of seniors that are planned to attend a College of Education accredited program with a Grow Your Own. And we have, we had one graduate last year. We had five this year. So the program is growing slowly, but it's definitely growing and going to impact our community. And I will tell you that Doug Major and Kiana Peterson are teacher graduate heroes because of the awards that they recognize those young ladies with and sent them on their way with a desk plate that's even nicer than mine. So the superintendent and I were admiring those and she was there as well, um, to represent them. And we tried to, just so you guys know, that, that the desire is to make a teacher signing day as significant as those that the athletes receive as well on their scholarship signing days because we, we know the importance and the critical shortage that we have right now in education. So making those moves one day at a time, I'd love to see that program expand. I did attend the Central Florida School Board Association meeting this morning and I just, you're going to that conference, right? We voted on that. Um, they did talk about, Senator Mumford was on the call today and he was talking with Andrea Messina, who's the FSBA, um, president about the conference. And they're going to be talking about some of these bills that we know are passed. And so I would love to hear what they have to say at the conference. It sounded like it was going to be very informational and we have a lot of oddities for sure. So I just wanted to bring that up. I also wanted to just quickly shout out, we had, we didn't just have Eustace. I know I'm partial because I have a, and I have a athlete on that team, but Southlake High School, Eastridge High School, Umatilla High School and Eustace High School all won their district round. So they're all the district champions and they will be playing regionals this weekend, next week. And so now's when the, the time gets fun for those ladies and their hard work. And I know that there's several baseball teams as well. I'm not, don't follow them as closely, but there's several baseball teams, including Eustace, that have won their district championship that are proceeding. So if you're looking to do anything, this is the season to go see concerts and go see plays and go see ballgames. And so lots of really big celebrations, um, happening for our students. And then the last thing I have as I spent, promise this is it, there's a lot, right? Last week was busy. Sheena Randolph at, um, Mount Dora Middle School is their mental health liaison. And Shannon Carter at Leesburg Elementary School, I got to spend some time with those ladies. I too have kind of been an advocate for getting to know that position and what it looks like for our kids. And spending time with those young ladies, um, has been very eye-opening. And I can really see the importance of what they are doing for the children in their schools and the relationships that they have for them. And I'm just, it really spoke to me as we go and advocate for the re, the, the, the millage to continue to that, to renew that millage. The layer of students that we wouldn't be able to provide support to without the positions that we have in our schools. And so if, if there's anything that I could say, it would be that the importance of those positions is unprecedented in the time that we're facing today and the crisis in regards to just seeing what, what kids are coming back from with this whole COVID-19 pandemic. So, um, they were, they were wonderful ladies. I'm still trying to hook up with Jill. Her and I have been working on a schedule at Lake Manuela High School, but I would encourage anybody that's interested to go have a look because they're doing amazing work. So with that being said, that's all I have. Meeting adjourned.